All right. Folks, it is 6:45. We'll go ahead and call us to order. We'd like to recognize all the guests that we have in attendance here with us today. Roll call. Four board members are here. Mr. Biggs could not make it. Under item two, routine consent actions, we'll approve the minutes from the special call meeting October the 12th, 2021. Approve 2022?
Yeah.
Approve the treasurer's orders, approve payment of bills, declare the middle school girls' basketball jerseys as surplus and approve according to KRS regulations, and approve applying for the Kentucky School Counselor Association as the Ella Ward brand.
So moved.
Joy makes the motion. Vanessa seconds. Any discussion items? All of us in favor? We'll carry that one. Item three would be the student presentation and recognition.
I'd like to congratulate Ben Johnson Elementary School guidance counselor, PE teacher, DJ Riggs for being named the Kentucky Shade 22-23 Teacher of the Year for elementary physical education. Also, congratulations are in order to VCHS senior Claire Thornhill for being named a commended student in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. Claire is an exceptional student with such a bright future. Congratulations to Tracy Denson and CJ Clifford for qualifying for the KHS DOA 2A State Meet. Congratulations to the VCHS cheerleaders for competing in the regional competition at Owensboro High School last Saturday. And I'd also like to recognize the VCHS JRTC program for recently starting a JRTC Color Guard team to present the flag at VCHS events. The Color Guard is an extracurricular Army JRTC team responsible for presenting the flag in a variety of settings. The members of the Color Guard practice drill and ceremonies, proper wearing of the uniform, as well as proper ways to show respect to our nation's flag. And that concludes recognition.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item four, discussion and action items. Under A, instruction and curriculum would be the Head Start Report. Hello, Mr. Jerry?
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Yes, first is my report. So, of course, we had a great October. It was lots of pumpkin patch visits and everything with autumn and leaves. So it was always a fun month in October. When we got back from fall break, teachers had another training with data and classroom expectations, things that Dr. B. and I are working on along with Shelley and Mandy Richardson. So that was a great time for the teachers. We've started family nights again. Our first one was at Irvington earlier this week. So we're looking forward to rotating those around the schools and lots of normalness. So it's all good stuff. So that's my report.
Okay. You want to move on to the governance training?
Yes, yes. All right. So the first thing, of course, there are a few things that I read each year. The first thing is that the governing body has a legal and fiscal responsibility for the agency. Remember that we are an exception to the membership rules. Since you are elected, you do not have to have board members with specific backgrounds and expertise. And you can also receive compensation as a board member. It's very important to have a good working relationship with the board, policy council, and program management, which is shared governance, which we do just fine with. And we are in the final year of our five-year grant. So starting in January, we will write a new one. So be looking forward to that coming up pretty soon. The training information has not changed that you all received. You all are seasoned experts at this point. Remember the reference book if you ever have questions. It is a very good resource. You also know where to find me. And do you?
On the bus.
On the bus. Just radio me and answer the question. Text me. I'll answer it sometime. So when I'm driving.
No, dear.
So any questions about training?
We appreciate having a multifaceted leader.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So that's the training portion. Okay. Next thing I always have to reach here is the governance, leadership, oversight, capacity screener. Basically, this thing I have to look at each year, and it's a document that looks at our capability as a district to operate a Head Start program. There's no changes from last year. We obviously meet all the requirements. We've had a program since 1965. So we meet the requirements to run a Head Start program. So any questions about that?
Want to move on to the fiscal audit process?
Yes, and I don't have that with me in front of me. But what that is, since 2007, Head Start says that the agencies have to have an auditor. They have to select one each year. And their district or board where they are has to be audited fiscally each year, which we do that. So no problem either for us.
Anybody have any questions?
Fine job.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Until next year.
We look forward to our next month.
Or next month.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right. We'll move on to item five, which is the Spring of 2022 State Testing Report.
Dr. B. is going to provide you an update on our 2022 Spring State Test Form.
All right. Well, good evening, guys.
Good evening.
All right. I'm going to just take a few minutes, and then I want to thank you for your time to talk to you a little bit about overall improvement. And so proud of the academic achievement job that our district did this last spring under state assessments. So just very quickly, I want to hit some hot points. The accountability system is different. It's the first full administration of the new accountability system. This year is completely achievement-based. Next year will be achievement plus growth. Okay? So with that being said, you see the different areas, reading and math, science, writing and social studies, our culture and climate survey, ELL. Now, English learning progress, one thing about that, we do not have enough students, so that does not impact our data. So I want to go ahead and get that out there. That's why you will not see this in the presentation today. We don't have enough students for it to be publicly shared. Okay? Also, we'll look at post-secondary readiness and our graduation rate. This basically breaks down the overall weights that are elementary, middle, and high. And you can see it's pretty consistent across the board with reading and math having a high grade. High school, obviously, a little bit different because you're looking at graduation and post-secondary readiness. Okay, we've moved away from proficient, distinguished, and what have you. We have colors now. Okay? I don't know why. Blue is the best and red is the worst. We won't go into that right now instead of Kentucky. But anyhow, all right, so blue is very high, green is high, yellow is considered basically medium, orange is low, and red is very low. No comment.
Can you say that again?
No. Play that back later on YouTube. There we go. All right, federal designations. Now, this is where we look at basically the state based on federal designations. You know, if a school performs at a certain lower level overall, then you have what's called CSI, comprehensive support improvement. If there's a gap, okay, we'll talk about this again. If there's a gap between a specific group of students and overall general population of students, then you could have a targeted support improvement. That's TSI. And then additional TSI could come over time, you know, if that particular group continues to struggle and we see gaps in data over, you know, a couple or two to three years. This year, there will be no new designations because it's the first year for the new accountability system. All right, let's look at some data. Suppressed data, and I kind of mentioned this just a minute ago when I was talking about the ELL population. If you go to a school report card right now, which is pretty simple, it's kentuckyschoolreportcard.com, okay? But if you go to the school report card data right now, and there's 10 or less students in that data, then it is not reported. Okay, that's just for, you know, confidentiality and not being able to identify students. Now, what we're going to do, I'm going to take you very quickly, because there's several, I want to take you very quickly through each individual school because we do need to publicly report how each school performed. Okay? So I'm going to quickly kind of show you their color, if they received a federal classification, and overall ratings. So we'll start with Ben Johnson Elementary School. Ben Johnson Elementary School, like all the schools in the district, were heavily impacted by the pandemic. I believe Ben Johnson was one of those schools that was one of the highest impact based on the number of students that were virtual and did not come back to school over a period of time. They did receive an orange rating overall. There was no federal classification, so there was not a severe gap, you know, in any particular area. If you look at their reading and math scores, math was probably the area that impacted them the most, and that's across the board. Math is an area that every school is working hard at. You'll see the science, social studies, and writing. They did have very strong combined writing scores. And then quality of school and climate and safety. Custer Elementary School, their overall rating was yellow, a little bit higher. There was no federal classification for Custer Elementary. You'll see that their results were yellow in reading and math and in social studies, science, and writing. And they had a green level, which is high level for their climate and safety survey. I'm sure there's a smiling face back there behind me somewhere. Hardensburg Elementary was a green school overall, so they actually rated, they were rated high overall with a 69.0 overall rating. And you see that in reading and math, they scored in the high level, which if you get high in reading and math, it's going to carry you. Yellow, science, social studies, and writing. And then you'll see they also scored high in their climate and safety rating. Irvington Elementary was actually very close to them, was in the high-yellow section. They were not, they did not receive a federal classification. They did score very high in reading and math, high level, science, social studies, and writing in the yellow. And their culture and climate survey was also green. Now, moving on to Breckridge County Middle School. Okay, the middle school did score very well. They were in the yellow category. They did receive a TSI rating. Now, this is targeted, so there was a gap. And the gap, as you can see, is right there, and it's on the score report card as well, was in students that are considered with a disability versus general population. So what we'll do, the middle school will target that specific gap of students. And the state gives certain classifications and things we have to do with school improvement plan. And as we get to school improvement plan and district improvement plan, we'll explain more of that information. Okay? So that will be coming over the next couple of months.
Well, may I ask right now what the classification of a disability is or how that is defined?
With like an IEP. It could be.
Okay, so anybody, anything that might have an IEP, regardless of physical or.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome.
Moving on to reading and math, you can see they scored a yellow overall, science, social studies, and writing, yellow overall, and a culture and climate survey was yellow overall. Breckridge County High School, the high school scored yellow overall, no federal classification. You can also see that reading, math, they were yellow, science, social studies, and writing, yellow. Their culture and climate survey was in the orange. Post-secondary readiness was in the orange and the graduation rate. Gradu-ration. I can't say the words today. Graduation rate was in the orange. Now, I do want to say the post-secondary readiness, you might see the orange, but that is actually just one point below the state average. And the graduation rate, that's a combined graduation rate, was actually almost a whole point above the state average. So just to kind of give you a comparison point for that information. All right, now, looking at specific data. This shows you basically the profession distinguished across the board. One, a couple of things, a reading overall score, proficient distinguished went up significantly, almost 10% from the previous year, math as well. So those are some high points. And our middle school, you saw very similar data. Math made a substantial gain, as in reading. One thing, and I did point this out, and I apologize for that, you'll see combined writing, which is something different from previous years. This is basically where they took language mechanics and on-demand writing and combined it into one score. Okay? So that really, in some ways, it simplifies what's on your variety, but it also doesn't give it a comparable point because you can't really compare it to anything we've done in the past. Okay? High school, one thing I want to point out, even though you may see 38% proficient distinguished, last year they were 21. So they went up 17% mathematics. That's a huge jump. All right. Overall, as a school district, and I know I showed you a lot of data, showed you a lot of points, well, what's that look like? Well, this is something I think that really points out comparison with overall state averages. You can look at every single area, every content area, look at elementary, middle, and high, and you'll see that we outscored the state in every single area except for elementary combined writing. But I just want to show you in comparison or comparable purposes that we outscored state averages in almost every single area. So that's something to be very proud of, all the things that we've overcome over the last year and how strongly we still performed last spring. Okay? All right, this is our culture and climate survey. These are just overall results, and you'll see that elementary, middle, and high were very comparable as far as our culture and climate. And this is all completed by students. I want you to keep that in mind. Students complete the survey as they get ready to start their state assessment. And as far as how a student feels safe, knowing I feel safe in my school, I feel like there's, that someone at my school cares about me, my teacher cares about me, my teacher listens to me, questions like that. You know, other questions, I just feel safe in the building, you know. All the questions related to culture and climate, you know, is there someone who cares about me in my school, those kind of questions. You'll see across the board that we're very comparable, if not above, state averages. All right, post-secondary readiness, and again, this is just high school level. You'll see that we are orange overall. Again, that indicator is 75. The state was at 76.1, so we're very close. Again, you get this for being academic and career-ready. Any questions about that? And then our graduation rate, you can see in the four-year cohort at 87.9, and the five-year cohort much higher at 95.6. Our overall graduation rate is a 91.8, which is, again, almost a whole point above the state average. Okay? Focal points, as we get ready to start working on school improvement plans and district improvement plans. Again, we want to continue to get our students proficient distinguished ratings. We're really targeting those students performing at novice level, trying to get them to where they are specifically proficient in reading, targeting a lot of areas in mathematics, which has been a struggle over the last couple of years. Again, we're working on gap closures specifically with students with disability at the middle school and in those schools also. And then focal, focal point on overall student experience, you know, the culture and climate in our buildings, opportunities, getting back to better than normal is a big focus throughout our whole school district. All right. Do you all have any questions?
Does the data give you enough information to draw down why our high school students don't? Because my interpretation of that data was some of our, half of our high school students do not feel safe in the school. Now, am I misinterpreting what I'm reading?
That was an index score. So the index score is not necessarily half. It's not a percentage. So there is more than half students that felt safe.
Okay, but is the data there to know?
Yes, there's specific questions.
Where you can draw down. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I'd be happy to, you know, go read that data with you at any time if you wanted to. But specifically, you can look and see how, you know, how students answer certain questions across the board, you know, whether they, you know, whether it's yes or no or what have you on any of those questions.
So this, this is a student's perception of how they feel about this versus the folks that talked to us at the regional meeting about the actual safety of the schools.
Right. Yeah, these are actually completed by students, culture and climate based on a student's perspective.
And a lot, a lot of factors can in play, come into play when they go to answer those questions. You know, they had a bad experience that morning. I mean, I understand that. But I would like to, to be honest with you, I'd like to see more of what those questions were and what.
Come down anytime. I'd be more than happy to look at it.
Well, how about you email it to me? My work hours and yours don't.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be happy to.
Well, Dr. Robin, we'll take a look at that, and that might be something for, for a board report too in the future.
Be glad to.
Another thing, too, is we're now in our second year of Terrence Matrix and the Behavioral Health Screening Tool that we're using to identify, which we've, we've been very pleased with the improvements that have been made in social emotional health over the last year. So that's another.
And going along with what he's saying right there, I think another important piece to this puzzle is that you, this was completed by all students. Some of these students weren't even in person a good part of the time. They were coming in just to take the state assessment. So you're talking, what, close to about 100 students that weren't even in person but took that culture and climate survey.
And safe has a lot of different meanings now thanks to the pandemic.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the discussion.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. B.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We don't need any, no motions on that. Item B, under operations, we'll hear the update on the middle school renovation project.
I'm not really going to say too much because the next three or four things, I think, deal with an update on the project. So I'm just going to go ahead and let Ms. Cash present on the next item.
Okay, we'll move on to, you want her to present first to approve the BCMS renovation project design document. So let you have the floor.
Turn them over there. Are you perfect?
Yep.
Nick, they can come right here if they want.
I brought along Kenny. He's going to pose as Vanna White for you all. I'm just going to help him put these up over here, and then I'll let him go to town pointing out.
Yeah, you did Vanna White. Well, now, let's don't stretch it.
I'd like to see color coordinated with the drawing of the picture.
Did that on purpose?
Way to showcase the. Will they speak? Although I hope, Kenny, that means it's Brett County Maroon, not red in there. Because your shirt is red.
You are correct. Yeah.
You're really not that coordinated.
I'm going to slip past you over here, and I'm going to use the screen to help.
We know we're never going to let you all live that down.
Oh, I know.
So tonight, we have design development documents up for board approval. And what you have, this is just a brief overview to kind of help orient you to the pictures you have in front of you. In the packets that Michael sent out includes the plans, not just for the middle school, but also includes Custer Elementary, where we're working on a site sign and a security vestibule. And then Ben Johnson, the re-roof out there, as well as the site sign associated with that. So those are all in the packet that you're approving tonight. So the main focus we wanted to talk about is just to kind of help, you know, focus around interior here and the scope of what we're talking about within this existing building and how we're trying to tie all the spaces together to really open it up. Last time I spoke, we talked about how we were putting a new addition out front to really change the dynamic that you have facing the road out there. And so we had some exterior renderings at that point just to kind of get a perspective on that. So in here, we're talking about the media center as the first area. We wanted to kind of just give you a glimpse of what we're envisioning for this. So the first view on your left over there is actually standing at these double doors at this back hallway and facing this corner up here towards the front of the building. So what you're seeing in a view includes a whole new reception area, reception desk for the media center, so a media desk. And then you would have some flexible furniture all throughout these areas, which will allow for some group seating, some breakout spots where kids could have small group sessions if they need to. And then off to the side, you can get a glimpse of a glass storefront group breakout space, which is similar to what we have over at the high school. The flooring that you're seeing in the picture to each side is LVT luxury vinyl tiles, or bringing in some of the soft warmth of that gray wood. And then the path through here, the thought being to actually use terrazzo. And so we would, we would install new terrazzo through here to kind of tie it back to the terrazzo that we're going to be installing at some of our new areas to bring everything back together. So then the second picture on your right is facing the opposite direction from these set of doors here, facing the opposite doors that we were previously standing at. So you get a glimpse of these overhead doors off of our lobby area. And then, I can't remember if you have the, no, you don't see the storefront in here. So you're just really seeing mostly the view right between here, which includes the overhead doors and the walking path. That would probably help if I clicked the next image, which is a blown up of it. If you could slide to one more. One more after that. There we go. Well, it's a little bit larger. Anyway, so those are the two for the media center and just trying to help orient you to the fact of how we're opening up this area through here and trying to pull people into your new front entry and allow for access to your cafeteria, but also creating a really neat focal point right here at the front of your building.
It's going to be just as dramatic of a change as the, as the media hub at the high school.
And then, and then Vanna White, if you wish, please lift our next images. I enjoy doing that way too much.
This right here is the front of the building right now, right?
Yes, this is the front line of the building out here. And so we're taking off the existing canopy that comes out this direction. Okay. So if you don't mind, click to the next image for me.
I was going to say that even with the building that I was going through.
Go backwards to the, oh, no, backwards. Okay. There we go. We'll just use that one. That's fine. That'll, okay. Typically, I don't do it in a large plane of a cafeteria, so we're just going to make do with this view. So on the left over there, you're standing with your back against the existing exterior, well, the existing wall adjoining the gym. And you're facing where our new addition is coming out here. So you're seeing where we're integrating new terrazzo into the cafeteria. So we're planning on this whole space having a terrazzo floor in there, so it really dresses it up and allows it to be a spot where you can have large groups meet and really clean it up easily.
And we don't want it to look like, here's the old part of the cafeteria, here's the new part.
Right. You don't have a joint in there. It's a nice transition between both of them.
Yeah.
So then on the right there, you're actually standing, so here's your front entry. You would come in, and the view you're seeing is right here as you're facing the overhead doors to your right. Those are the glass overhead doors in the media center. And you're seeing the extended learning area right here that was, is currently offices out there. So we've opened this up to really allow for it to become a STEM extended learning space where they can have materials easily and readily available, take them out of class and bring them over there, and be able to have a spot to meet. So those are just a couple of glimpses to have out there so that people can have a vision in their minds of this is what the end-all goal is because it's going to be a little bit before we get to that point. So you really want to keep the goal in mind to get there.
We will, you know, we've shown you some exterior before, but they're not near as articulated as these are. So we're waiting, we have all the pieces, but we're waiting on one thing, and that's the survey information because when we show you the exterior, we want to get a shot down on the football field, looking up, and really so you all can see that. So we need to know the elevation of the football field in relation to the parking lot, in relation to the finished floor inside the building. And then, then we can put those pieces together because when we get to this level, these are more than pretty pictures. They're very accurate. And so I don't want to show you an exterior that's, I want to know that before I put all the pieces together. So we'll be back with just, just as nice pictures for those areas as well.
So that's kind of a recap for tonight. You all have any questions as far as the documents that you're approving or any of the scope or anything?
It'd be nice to see how that elevation plays out because, you know, we had a question about.
Yes.
Where it goes.
Well, and, and we know that we're going to have a couple steps, which also means we'll have some ramp. And I don't want to show, I don't want to guess that and show you something that then, oh, you, I thought we ran three steps and we have six. You know, so we just want it to be accurate when we, when we bring that back to you.
Yeah, yeah, we have a general concept. Now, we're waiting to get the finishing touches so we can get you kind of a nice exterior rendering that's to that same level. Any other thoughts or questions?
Looks really good.
Those get to stay with you all by the way.
Yeah.
When you start talking about this, you know, it makes sense now.
Well, that, the other part is to get everybody excited about it and to have, you know, this is the vision. So now it helps for people to understand it is a reality, and it's coming.
You know, and it is a challenge for a couple of years, you know, your staff, it's in that school, it's going to be disruptive for a couple of years. And it is always good to be able to see that end result, you know, this is what we're, this is what we're shooting for. It's tough, but we're going to get there. But it's going to be absolutely amazing, and you all have done a wonderful job designing.
Yes, you have. You did a really good job. He's right there.
Now, Van, I think Vanna's done a nice job.
No, but we're, we really appreciate continuing to work with you all. And, you know, having done new buildings and major renovations, I'll be honest with you, renovations are tougher because you're trying, there's, there's an expectation of, you know, if you're doing a brand-new building, you know, you expect certain things. But with a renovation, you know, it's just, it's tougher to make it all, and I'm not saying that in a bad way. I love the challenge. So I'm, I'm really excited about these concepts that we've shown you because, you know, you all have said, here's what we want. And boy, it's just going to, it's going to change that school so much.
Well, and we hosted the fourth district KSBA regional a few weeks ago. And every one of those visitors from other school districts, they just couldn't get over how that, the high school just pops. I mean, it just, it looks great.
And I talked to a couple of folks that went to school there, and, you know, they were seeing it for the first time, you know, so it was, it's really neat to hear and see that.
So then, do we have to vote on that first, or do you want us to roll into the next ones? Yeah.
Vanessa makes the motion.
Say it.
And Rick's going to second that one. Any other discussion? All of us in favor? We'll approve that one.
Okay.
All right. Our next item is approve the BG2 for the middle school renovation project.
So this is the typical form.
Indicators?
Yep. Same form. KD requires. There's nothing fancy in it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to explain it, but it's the normal.
Joy makes that motion? Vanessa seconds. Any discussion? Vanessa seconds, any discussion there? All is in favor? We'll move on to approve.
Crime prevention.
Are we done with you guys?
Uh, do we have the crime prevention?
Yeah. Crime prevention due environmental design checklist for the middle school renovation project, sorry.
So this is another one of those forms that KED requires us to go through. It's a checklist of pretty much every, everything from the site to inside the building with an understanding of how could it impact security? So we, we go through the checklist, there's a copy of it for you to review. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And we, a- as we talked before, one of the things we're doing is moving the administration out to the front, providing a secure vestibule. So we're hitting on the main targets of that, just to, you know, as a general, this is one of the first things we're going to do.
Correct, correct.
Very good. Joy makes the motion?
Okay.
Rick seconds that one, any discussion there? All is in favor? Item five is approve the geotechnical and special inspection proposal for the middle school renovation project.
Uh, geotechnical is a requirement for, I mean, again, you have to have the ground tested so we know the size of the foundations and what needs to be put in there. Otherwise, it won't stand. So obviously that, it has to move forward, same with special inspections. We received three proposals. Uh, this was the low, apparent low, and there wasn't any issues that we could come up with, you know, that would make us suggest not to. So our recommendation is to proceed if you have any questions I can answer.
Vanessa, Vanessa makes the motion?
Okay.
Rick will second that. Any discussion there? All is in favor? All right, item six, approve the statement of work agreement for the KED group for school activity accounting software.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yep.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. It's good to see you. Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, I know it was a little late.
No, no, we're good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Before I get to the KEV group stuff, Jennifer and her team have been absolutely fantastic. It is, this project, really in comparison to other projects we've done recently, is, is night and day a whole lot. Now, a lot of it is to her team and, and what they've done. So they've been, we, we've had a lot of fun on this project, I have to say, I think they would agree. But it, it's been great, so it, it really has. I give them a hard time, but they actually do a good job.
You just received a compliment from Michael Moreland.
Thank you. Turned your mic on and walked up.
Let the record, there's a, there's a YouTube of this, right?
Yeah. It'll be the only one, so.
Thank you all, be safe going on.
Are we good?
We're good.
Watch for deer.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll move on to the work agreement with the KEV group.
Yeah, this is actually updating our school accounting software. It's a culmination of the last, I guess, eight to 10 months. We've been looking at new alternatives for our school accounting system. Financial reporting requirements have changed dramatically over the last couple of years and, and I think this system handles that a little bit better. It streamlines fee, collection of fees across the school district. It allows us to do that in a little more efficient manner. It also allows for online ticket sales, it has an online ticket sale fee.
I was quite excited about that.
There it is. It actually also, we can do, there's the potential to do credit card, we can take credit cards and concessions. So there's a lot of growth. I think this has been innovative for the district and it's all under one house. It's all under one, they offer everything under this group. And they're starting to come in Kentucky in several districts right now. So I was really impressed with them. I had our AD come in and take a look at them. I had our high school bookkeeper come in and, and watch a presentation and they were, they were impressed. So I'd like you to move forward, I'd recommend approval.
And our school war attorney has reviewed the agreement.
Oh, yes, the legal matter.
I like it. Joy, you want this one?
Oh, moved to her, I'm sorry.
Joy makes the motion? Rick's going to second that one? Any discussion there? All is in favor? That was a quick one. Item seven, approve the first reading of the 2324 school calendar.
All right, so first reading of the calendar, the calendar committee event recently. And the calendar that they are bringing before tonight for first reading, remember, this, this requires a first reading and then a second reading at the next board meeting. But just a couple of highlights of this proposed calendar. First day of school will be on August the 9th, 2023, that's on a Wednesday. So it would stick with our model that we've been working with the last few years, where you have opening day on a Monday, a district by training day on Tuesday, and then first day for students on a Wednesday. Fall break would remain the first full week of October. Christmas break would take place December 18th to 29th, 2023. And then, obviously, you have the New Year's holiday and that thrown in there after Christmas break. And then spring break would remain in the first full week of April, like it has been in the past. And the last day of school would be May the 15th, 2024. Mr. Taylor, I know you're on the school calendar committees, is there anything you want to add?
I think you've said it all.
Thank you for sharing. It was good.
All right.
Careful.
Motion, Vanessa makes the motion?
Okay.
Rick seconds, any discussion on that? All is in favor? I'll have that done. Item eight is approve a contract with Twin Lakes Behavioral Health and Wellness for school therapy services.
So I've been working with Savannah Haycraft, who works for Twin Lakes, and about possibly partnering with Twin Lakes Behavioral Health and Wellness to offer therapy services in our schools. This is very similar to agreements that we have with Astra and Communicare. And given the, the need out there, I think this is a terrific opportunity. So I've worked with the board attorney to draft an agreement that's similar to the agreements that we already have in place. And I recommend that we approve and, and begin this process. I have a telephone meeting with Ms. Haycraft tomorrow to discuss.
I move to approve and just want to say, you know, it's not a reflection of our current working agreements. It's just the, the need and the demand for services and trying to make sure our students have all the opportunities possible. So we're very blessed to have the services that we have.
Yes.
Joy makes the motion? Vanessa seconds, any discussion there? All is in favor? Thank you, Joy. Item nine is approve the initiation of the district facility planning process.
Uh, this is.
We have this here already.
Yeah, this is every four years, it's due June of 2023, but we actually need to get started on it now. We thought we'd go ahead and try to knock it out over the next few months and it'll, it'll take a while. But this is just the first step so that we can notify facilities that we're ready to start. Recommend approval.
To approve.
Rick makes the motion? Joy seconds, sorry Vanessa. Any discussion there? All is in favor? Carry that one on. Item 10 is approve the KED's first offer of assistance for the 2223 school year.
This is something that we do annually, it does require a match, but we do budget for that match. And these are funds that are used for Chromebook replacements and, and things along that manner. I recommend approval.
Joy makes the motion? Vanessa seconds, any discussion there? All is in favor? Item 12, acknowledge employee grievance. Uh, and we have received a grievance from an employee. We'll acknowledge the receipt of that and we'll contact the board attorney and how to move forward. We don't need a motion on that. Item 12, act on expulsion hearings.
Yes. I move to expel four BCHS students and one BCMS student for up to 18 weeks for violation of the student code of conduct.
Rick makes that motion, Joy seconds, any discussion? All is in favor? And move on down, BCA, BCSC, anything, John? You're good. Superintendent's report.
All right, I'll be quick. Uh, the holiday season is officially upon us in Breckridge County and our students and staff remain committed to working hard and finishing 2022 strong. Continued focus in the school district and the area, or is going to continue in the areas of school improvement planning, which is typically due around Thanksgiving break, kindergarten readiness, post-secondary readiness, interventions for students not performing at grade level, reading and math, ACT preparation at BCHS, preparing students for those transition-ready benchmarks, and socio-emotional needs of our students. Midterm virus reports for the second grading quarter, we're going home this week with students. We'll be working hard to make sure our students finish the grading quarter on a positive note. I'd also like to share that the school board hosted a fantastic KSBA fourth district fall regional meeting on October 202022. Several districts sent their school board members for a night of good food and school safety training. I'd like to thank Vice Chair Vanessa Lucas for all of her hard work making this happen for our school district and all of our school board members who helped as well make that happen. I also like to thank all of our district leaders who played a hand in it as well. And it was just, it was a fantastic night. And, and again, just wanted to recognize the efforts of Ms. Lucas and, and thank you everyone.
It was a beautiful night and a good way to showcase that school.
You betcha. And that concludes superintendent's report.
All right, and in public comment, we have no one signed in, so we'll move on to a adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Rick makes the motion? Vanessa seconds, all in favor?